Yeah. We actually, the, um, Travis just, like, on the conference. You just got the, kind of, the lucky Friday, so, it's, um, yeah. It's, once you know, I mean, yeah, sometimes I'm not quite, I would say I'm not quite prepared to make it.
The Air Force support was written on, uh, the 11th, uh, January 24th, uh, in the air force.
I think it was up to the website. Okay, I would, well, I don't know, that's not, that's not very, my, but, yeah.
There's a part of the, sure.
Yes, yeah, yeah, and, well, maybe that's what the board is, and we get their functional side, or very hard, I mean, we can't really make a determination to see what the, the best answer is, and, and they're aware that.
All right. Oh, okay, so, it's one of those things, they, they kind of, uh, so.
Yeah, we're gonna find my.
Well, you did, uh, based on, uh, this is a fact.
I'm one of two.
Jeffrey, Jeffrey, Jeffrey was at Van Ness, which did the peer review.
Okay.
And we worked with Jeffrey on, uh, maybe law, general, certainly, uh, you do runs for show.
Okay.
And, uh, you're, yes, the law, the law, okay. So remember, I said, yeah, so, you did, um.
So, in a sense, they were most likely to be getting, so, um, kind of, turn lanes, make it, uh, and that's, um, and our, that's, that's, that's basically what we're, there's an, yeah, sure.
Thanks, fine, here, this is good, this is fine, we're glad, I know, I know.
That's, that's, I like, that's, that's strong.
Yeah.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to, I teach, so, I teach in Centerville, so I can be out at 1:30, 1:00, um, so, I don't know, I don't know, people, I've never seen, except for, you know, 15 years, but, good, so good to teach, it's, uh.
Could I have your attention, please, we're gonna be starting up shortly? Good evening, and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for October 1st, 2018. Tonight, we have a, um, a matter that was continued from our August 20th meeting, which is a continued business, it's site plan review, 677 and 705 Patucket Boulevard. An application was submitted by DSM Realty, Inc., for approval of a site plan review under section 11.4, and any other relief requested by the Lowell zoning ordinance. The applicant proposing to construct an approximately 72,500-square-foot Market Basket Supermarket, and 12,000-square-foot of retail space at the above address, with, um, on 677 Petucket Street, with 437 parking spaces, landscaping, stormwater management, and utility improvements. The project includes reconstruction of 134 parking spaces for the existing restaurant at 705 Petucket Boulevard. The site is located in the SMU zoning district. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Attorney Greg Curtis, I'm with the law firm of Goldman and Curtis and Lowell. As you indicated, this is a extension of the Planning Board meeting from August 20th, 2018. At that time, we went through many of the issues that were comments made by the planning and development, and, um, one of the major, um, issues at the time was the traffic, and the traffic, uh, it was decided that a peer review would need to be conducted, and, my understanding is that peer review was conducted, and that there was, um, a letter sent to the city, and then a meeting was scheduled on, I think it was September 25th, that members of the, uh, Market Basket and Demoulis team met with city officials, and then we've made also comments on, um, uh, recommendations that were made by the, uh, by the, uh, planning engineer. So, tonight, uh, we have Rob Nagy, he's the traffic engineer, along with Kathleen Keen, we have Eric Gerard, who's a project manager, Jim Lamb from J and Company, Eric Brown from the architectural firm, these were all the people that, uh, we had up at my office back in, uh, July, that we met with the Petuckeville Residents Association, trying to go through some of the concepts and what we were planning to do out in the, uh, out in the area. So, um, you know, just to reiterate, um, you know, uh, Demoulis supermarkets has been part of the community for over 100 years, uh, we look out the window and we see all the progress that Demoulis has made in this area, and, um, this is a long overdue project for Petuckeville. This is a tremendous, tremendous project that's gonna benefit the area, not only economically, um, traffic-wise, hopefully it's gonna be a catalyst for the bridge development, that we keep our fingers crossed that that is coming down the road, um, employment of people, uh, the benefit to the neighborhoods, the benefit to people that can now shop on that side of the river, people from Tingsboro, from Drakeett, from Petuckeville especially, that will have the opportunity to shop at a first-class market, from somebody who has been tied to Lowell for many, many years, and, uh, there's no better opportunity than right now to have, um, the Demoulis people spend the kind of time and money and effort that, uh, will make this a, a first-class operation. So, um, I think it's best, at this point, to, um, turn it over to, um, traffic people, or also to Eric Gerard, the project manager, so we can start to go through, uh, issues that may have come up, uh, with regards to the traffic, uh, traffic study.
Thank you, Greg. Eric Gerard, civil engineer with VHB. Um, before I turn it over to Rob, he'll go through the, the traffic, um, comments received from the peer review, just want to give an update, we, we had a Conservation Commission hearing last, last week as well, uh, just a quick update on that, uh, we went through the, the peer review comments, so that, that meeting was Wednesday, and like Greg said, we had a meeting on Tuesday with the peer reviewers, uh, that was both with the traffic peer review, as well as, um, the Conservation Commission peer review, um, which, which reviewed the drainage and the compensatory flood storage. So, a very positive meeting, um, all comments, um, can be addressed, so we're wrapping up final plans with that as well, um, we did give them, um, some extra information, but many of the comments were detail-related, that would, would show up in a construction plan set as well. Um, so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Rob, to, to run through the, the traffic, um, peer review comments and, uh, solutions.
Uh, thank you, Eric, and thank you, members of the board. Um, for the record, Robert Nagy with Van Ness Hang and Bruslin, um, and, uh, sort of just talk a little bit about some of the traffic comment, the peer review comments that came in, in our discussion with, uh, with city staff. Um, you should have received a, a booklet that responds to, uh, the comments from Mr. Dirk, and in fact, excuse me. I'll have him sort of talk to you about sort of his, his thoughts on it. Um, but at the end of the day, that, there's some technical questions that were raised, we've, we've addressed, we believe, and Mr. Dirk can go through that a little bit when he, uh, when he gets his chance to, uh, to talk at the stage. Excuse me, here, hold on one second. Yeah, no, I have these little, excuse me, yeah, I have these little murmurs in my heart, and they sort of catch up with me every once in a while, so, give me a second here as I go through this.
Take your time, sir, no problem.
Thank you.
No problem at all, take your time.
Thank you. So, the recommendation piece of this, um, really boils down to addressing some of the off-site impacts associated with the project. Um, we spent some time looking at the intersection of Varnam and Old Ferry, which I think was the epicenter of some of the discussion we had the last time, the appropriate treatment there, and our response in the, in the memo, uh, tries to sort of lay out our approach to doing that. Um, the peer reviewers asked for a series of, um, for, for lack of a better term, options to be considered there, and I think in our last hearing, I walked through some of what those options might be. They range from simple turning lanes, uh, to, uh, traffic signals, to, uh, perhaps even a roundabout be created at the, at the location. So what we're looking to do is create, uh, create a, a memo that analyzes each of those different options, um, provide it to the city, uh, for a review, uh, as well as the peer reviewer, uh, and, and ultimately perhaps a selection of a preferred alternative that you would like to see advanced as part of this project. Now, certain elements of this project, um, can be constructed within the rights-of-way that exist out there, uh, with, uh, the, the target of addressing the project's impacts, specifically at that intersection, as well as pre-existing conditions, uh, that we all, I think, agree, exist there as well. The thought process being that we would, we'd give the whole, the, the array of options that would be considered, the city would come back through discussions within internal staff, as well as perhaps with the neighborhood group, and say, yes, we like this idea, this is the one we want to advance. If there are options that we can advance, we will. If there are options that we can't advance by ourselves, uh, we would like to be part of that, um, specifically if right-of-way takings may be required for some of the, what we foresee will likely be the preferred alternatives, the roundabout being one that's been commonly discussed. Those certainly will have right-of-way implications, the city owns rights-of-way there, we can work with them to acquire what's needed to construct that, but at the same point in time, it's a private developer, the ability to take land is not something, uh, that could be, uh, could be done, uh, individually by, by them. But again, we want to be part of the solution, and I think to the response that we provided here, what we would like to do is provide an interim solution at that particular location, which was outlined in our original traffic study, submit this functional design report, memorandum, whatever you want to call it, to the city for selection, and then we, being the entity looking for approval here, would go through the whole design review process with the city, uh, and fund, uh, construction, or, funded large portion of the construction that could potentially happen out there, and I think in our response, what we've provided is a $200,000 commitment towards that construction. Ultimately, that, you know, that would be a nice long-term solution here, uh, for that particular location, and would be one that would be in harmony with the different parties who would be in, you know, looking at this. As we move down the streets, if you will, and look at other locations, um, the intersection of Mammoth Road, West Meadow and Old Meadow was brought up, uh, the request was made specifically to perhaps do the same approach at that location, um, we do know that the city has undergone, for lack of a better term, their own study of that intersection, uh, and that we would, you know, we would support whatever option would, uh, would take place there, uh, again, with the city's, with the city's advancement. There's a series of potential bicycle pedestrian mitigation, we provided a response that talks a little bit about that, how we could work along, uh, Patucket Boulevard, um, Old Ferry, and perhaps even on Varnam, and doing some, uh, some striping, roadway striping, uh, sidewalks along our site frontage to, to sort of make that work. Um, we would look at the U-turn that exists along, uh, Patucket Boulevard, um, there was some concern about traffic leaving our project site, and, uh, weaving across to make that quick U-turn in that little pocket that exists out there, uh, the recommendation was made to perhaps look at closing that, as part of our traffic signal improvements at the intersection of, uh, Old Ferry and, and, um, Patucket Boulevard, we would look to close that as well, and work, and work that ultimately, uh, into the signal design that would be out there. Traffic calming, an issue that I think exists in the neighborhoods and in and around the project site today, is something that we take very seriously. Uh, as a supermarket, we're certainly going to be attracting residents, uh, from close proximity, as well as a small distance away, uh, we certainly don't want to increase the amount of, uh, cut-through traffic that exists out there today on some of the roadways. Um, I was mentioning when we met with the staff, that we clearly, we've been out there a number of different times, uh, and seen a lot of, of existing strange, uh, traffic movements, if you will, of people getting around some of the more congested roadways. The neighborhoods that support those roadways, the residential streets, that aren't intended to sort of carry that volume, are seeing the impacts of that, and I particularly look at, um, Townsend Ave as, as one of those. Uh, there is certainly enough traffic coming over the bridge today, uh, they cut through the bowling alley, and then they go up Townsend. Not a, not an issue that this particular development would enhance or worsen, um, just by its mere proximity, but at the same point in time, it is something that would end up, you know, if the, if the supermarket was there, perhaps there might be a converse amount of traffic that might try to sneak if we don't get some of the mitigation right on this project. So what we agreed to do was submit a, give the city, and perhaps they could hire a, a third party, not unlike Mr. Dirk or perhaps another firm, to look at traffic calming measures that could be implemented in the area out here. Um, there'd be a small donation that we thought would be reasonable, uh, towards accomplishing that goal, and then work finally with the city to implement some of those as the project gets built out. I think you'll remember the last time I was here, I hope you'll remember the last time I was here, we talked a little bit about, sort of, the traffic monitoring phase of this project, and that's also spelled out, uh, in, in our response. So what we would do, about six months after the opening of the store, 12 months, and perhaps 24 months afterwards, we'd do observations out here to try to see how traffic is flowing in and around, uh, the project site, where our project impacts are, where they're not, where they were worried to be, and where they perhaps aren't, uh, existing, uh, and document that so that the, the city could then sort of work with us to address, uh, any issues that might come up through that, through that, uh, observation period. Um, one of the things that we think would be valuable in that is identifying the traffic generation of this site, as we've sort of hypothetically told you what we think it's going to be, through our studies and evaluations of other similar supermarkets, and using industry standards, um, we want to make sure that our numbers are right, um, and that our assumptions are right, and one of the efforts that Mr. Dirk actually went, put us through to, again, for lack of a better term, uh, made a sort of stress test a few of those, to make sure that, hey, if our assumptions on traffic distribution weren't right, what would happen, what would be the negative impacts, what would be the positive impacts of shifting more traffic in a different direction and not, and I think we've outlined a little bit of that, uh, in our, in our responses. Um, Mr. Dirk also, through his, uh, study, um, or his evaluation, also asked us to look at a series of onsite, uh, physical changes to the site. I think for the most part, we've agreed with, uh, all of them, uh, in how they're gonna be done, uh, certainly our operations, deliveries, I think we said at the last meeting, and will continue to reinforce, will all be directed to and from Patucket Boulevard, away from certainly the, the Varnam Road, Old Ferry Street access points. Um, we, we've coordinated with the fire department to make sure that their trucks, uh, can adequately service the site, uh, we've included a few new pedestrian connections internal to the site, to make sure that folks who are maybe eating at JJ Boomer's, should they want to walk to the supermarket or vice versa, could make that, uh, without having to walk in the middle of a drive aisle. Um, we've, uh, we've, uh, added some signage to the plans to talk a little bit about, you know, trucks not idling for any extended period of time, state law mandates that they have to basically be, uh, they can idle for about five minutes and then it has to be shut off, and, and that's, those reminders are put on, onto the signs that exist out there, um, and, uh, and a few other sort of minor, little bits and pieces of, of, of addressment on the, on the site plans. I think that's the nature, that's the general nature of, of where we've, we've been, where we've gone through, and, and our responses. I think it might be appropriate, if you want to ask some questions, I'm more than happy to take them, but it may be more appropriate at this point in time to talk to Mr. Dirk, your engineer, uh, to talk about the adequacy of some of these responses, his perspective, and I know you have city staff here as well, uh, that was also part of those discussions, um, with us, uh, with us last week.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else want to speak on behalf of the applicant? Let me just finish from the applicant's side, anybody else over here? No?
Would you like to hear from the architect? Do you have any architectural questions?
Sure, yes, please, yeah, yes, please.
Good evening, members of the board, my name's Eric Brown, my firm's Prelitz Chalinski Associates, from Cambridge, Massachusetts. Um, before I talk about this, I'll just talk about, generally about this client, I just want to say that I've been working for Demoulis for about 12 years, done about 25 stores, I did the Bridge Street store, and, you know, they're a pleasure to work for because they do everything, everything they do is quality, there's no fake materials on those buildings, there's no fake brick, there's no EPIS, those are all quality materials, real brick, real steel. So, I think last time, uh, we presented two schemes, one that was a more contemporary scheme, and this one that is a more, uh, historic scheme, and we, after some thinking and talking to ownership, we decided to stay with the historic scheme, uh, it's, it's more familiar and more comfortable to most people, kind of like this beautiful room that we're sitting in here, um, there's a relationship to history, and we think with a strong history in the neighborhood and the city, this is an appropriate, um, solution. If I can ask, answer any questions, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, the applicant, before I turn it over to the public? Nope, okay. Anybody here this evening want to speak in favor of this project?
How you doing tonight? My name's Patrick Regal, I live at 17 Laurie Lane, that's right on Vanna Ave, real close to, um, Old Ferry Road, and it's a home run for us, 'cause, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna have 100 new jobs, 300 part-time jobs, it's, it's gonna be an excellent thing, close by, go shopping, everybody on this side of the river can go food shopping, this, it's a no-brainer, it's a, it's an excellent project, and, uh, that's about it, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak, in favor, in favor, in favor? Anybody, uh, anybody want to speak in opposition, or just have questions, in opposition, opposition?
What if we just want to ask questions?
That's fine too, sir.
Okay, good.
Not a problem.
My name is John Hamblit, I live at 495 Varnam Avenue, and, uh, I represent Petuckeville Citizens Council, the rest of whom are at their monthly meeting. Um, first of all, there apparently is another document that was made available, and it's not the September 14th document, um, you referred to a booklet, uh, we have not received any further documentation, because it's a public hearing, the same thing is with conservation, information is not made available to the public, so of course we will be asking for a continuance, which you would do anyway because of the conservation decision. Um, but I will not be able to address any of the issues that are in the booklet, because I haven't seen it. And, uh, one comment on the traffic, two comments on the, on the traffic peer review, apparently it was, uh, available on the 14th but not posted on the website until the 25th, and so we finally found it on the 27th. Um, having said that, we've worked with Jeffrey Dirk several times before, uh, in the neighborhood, we're pleased to see that he's done the peer review, uh, he is familiar with the neighborhood, and my first question is going to be to him. Um, I'm gonna be working from the document itself, not from the letter to Christine McCall, and so on page two, under traffic volumes and data collection, uh, there's a comment that it was on Thursday, September 7th through Saturday, September 9th, 2017, and that that period is representative of above-average conditions, um, that was Labor Day weekend, and I would contest those results and would like a response to my question. On Labor Day weekend, wouldn't the traffic count be lower, rather than higher than expected? How do we want to do this? Ask all my questions and then?
Sure, when you ask the questions, then, uh, put them back out to reply by either Mr. Dirk or the applicant and our, our staff, okay? So we got the first one down, right? Everybody agree what the first question was, I understand, so traffic count on Labor Day weekend, right? How are you all over?
Um, on page four and five, under future conditions, no build conditions, it talks about, uh, a point five, one-half percent per year compounded annual growth rate, and that's based on, uh, statistics of some sort, and it was taken into consideration, uh, the collegiate charter School of Lowell and the Cross River Center. Um, there are comments that in addition, applicants engineer notice that the community of Khmer Buddhist monks, who is the CKBM, have proposed to develop a temple cultural center on land abutting the project site, however, details of the proposal have not been finalized and submitted to the city. That's not necessary, because this study looks forward seven years, and therefore any proposal that might, uh, happen in the next seven years should be concerned, is that true? And Market Basket has come to an agreement with the community of Khmer Buddhist.
How are you all over?
On page four and five, under future conditions, no build conditions, it talks about a .5, one-half percent per year compounded annual growth rate, and that's based on statistics of some sort, and it was taken into consideration the collegiate charter School of Lowell and the Cross River Center. There are comments that in addition, applicants engineer noticed that the community of Khmer Buddhist monks, who is the CKBM, have proposed to develop a temple cultural center on land abutting the project site. However, details of the proposal have not been finalized and submitted to the city. That's not necessary because this study looks forward seven years, and therefore any proposal that might happen in the next seven years should be concerned. Is that true? And Market Basket has come to an agreement with the community of Khmer Buddhist monks, and the community of Khmer Buddhist monks has met with the city, and we have met with former city manager John Cox, state rep Tom Golden, and representatives of the community of Khmer Buddhist monks, and we have plans, and I'd like to share those plans because I would like some of this to be incorporated into the traffic study.
Could you give one to Patrick? John, give that to Patrick and let me share this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I apologize, it is so small. Just two things worth noting, and that is Market Basket is noted. If you put this in landscape and put the logo to the bottom right, the green area is the CKBM land, community of Khmer Buddhist monk land, and you'll see a gray line. That gray line is their entrance and exit onto Old Ferry, and it's actually between Market Basket and the Elks. And I'm sorry that I couldn't get you a larger picture, but there are, pardon me. There are 291 parking spaces. I'm hoping that this configuration of only one road going in and out, of an emptying on Old Ferry, and consideration of the number of trips to support 291 parking spaces, and I do apologize, if you count up the number of parking spaces, you'll be about 43 short. That's the number that will be under the temple.
Just want to interject for one minute. To the members of the board, we're here tonight on the Market Basket issue. There's nothing before the board tonight talking about the Cambodians and building a temple. There's been no application. I don't think anything's come before this board, so for Mr. Hamblit to come up and present documentation that may happen in the future does not affect what we're dealing with today, and I don't think it's something that needs to be addressed at this time. If the Cambodian Association wants to build a temple, they're going to have to come before you, just like we're coming before you. I don't think we need to have conjecture of what's going to happen or where roadways are going to go. We had some conversations with the Cambodian people to possibly, if they did develop, to put a walkway between the Market Basket site and their temple, but this is all talking about what may happen in the future, not what's going on right now. So I don't think the board really should be spending its time trying to determine how a Cambodian temple is going to affect this area in the future when it hasn't come up. Thank you.
Thank you. As I said, as I understand this document, there's a seven-year look forward, and Market Basket has had conversations. The actual walkway between the temple and their parking lot is shown on this drawing, although it is minuscule, and so I'm just asking that it be considered when calculating And perhaps this has already been addressed, I'm on page seven, under comments. It talks about, in the last sentence of number one, the applicants engineer should revise trip generation calculations accordingly, and the same thing is said for number two. And so obviously, we would, so page seven of the report, it says trip distribution summary at the top. Not the letter from Christine, but the actual report, the 13-page report. Trip distribution summary at the top of the page with a graph. So I'm just reading comments one through four on this page, and I note on number four, the overall trip assignment to and from the west appears to be overstated, with trips assigned to Pawtucket Boulevard and Varnum Avenue understated. So we'll be interested to see what those revised figures are. So those are the questions on that page. On page 10 of the report, and number two is recommending a functional design report for Old Ferry Road and Varnum Avenue. Number three is recommending a functional design report at Mammoth Road and West Meadow, and I'm just wondering what happened to the intersection in between Varnum Avenue and West Meadow? And shouldn't there be a functional design report for the corner of Varnum and West How are we doing? And on the next page, page 11, about one-fourth of the way down, number seven, traffic calming plan. Provide funding to the city for the study and implementation of neighborhood traffic calming plan to include Varnum, between and including Jennifer, Bedford, Lexington, Townsend, and Old Ferry. Again, where is West Meadow? I would have said that that should include Varnum Avenue between and including West Meadow, Jennifer Road, Bedford Avenue, Lexington Avenue, Townsend. This is a fairly critical intersection. I've got an elementary school and a middle school right up the street, two nursing homes on either side, a fire department down the street, and I don't think that corner should And those are all my questions for now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak in regards to the project? In favor, I'll comment. Anyone else?
I'll speak real quick. I will say...
Just give us any address for the applicant, please, sir.
I'm sorry, Robert Judson. I live at 138 Avon Street. I own that two-family.
Thank you.
I live over there, and I have to drive over the bridge to get to the Market Basket, which is tons of traffic, and I think that's a great place. I hope they decide to go with local labor and not use anyone from New Hampshire to come down here, way under area standards, and other than that, I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Hi, David Owen. I live at 26 Old Ferry Road, probably the most impacted by this project, and I'd really like to reserve my questions for after the peer review is gone through, because I'd like to see if he's addressed what I'm going to ask, and I'd like to get it from him first. So I'd like to reserve the right to speak after him, if that's okay?
Sure. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, at this point in time, we'll turn it over. Mr. Dirk, if you'd like to speak, I'd appreciate it. I don't know, in your commentary, maybe you might answer some Mr. Hamblit's questions. If not, we can get back to him, whatever's easier for you, sir. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Vanessen Associates, we're the city's traffic peer review consultant for this project. So if it makes sense, I'll kind of go through what we've done, but then maybe respond to the comments or questions that were asked first, and then I can go into a little bit more detail on our review. So as was mentioned, we've actually, we provided a letter to the city. The original letter was dated September 14th. That letter consisted of our review of the July traffic study that was submitted and supported the project, as well as the site plans that went along with that. And there's two parts of the letter. The first was kind of a summary of our comments, and then the last part was more of the detailed technical review, and that's where you heard the gentleman going through kind of our detailed comments on the traffic study. As the applicant had mentioned as a part of their opening presentation, they have responded to the initial comment letter. We did receive the responses last Friday, so we did have a chance to go through those today, and we'll be issuing a follow-up letter. And I think it is, you heard a summary from the applicant's traffic engineer. In general, with respect to the technical aspects of the traffic study, we have concur with the applicant that they have addressed our comments, and I think focusing on that, I think the key thing is, as was mentioned, kind of our role as the peer reviewer on the project is to check the facts and figures that are presented, but it's also to kind of push and prod at some of the assumptions that were made in the traffic study. We've done that as a part of our comments, and the applicant has kind of answered our what-if scenarios. And the key thing on that is really two things. It's to make sure that as we talk about mitigation that the applicant may bring forward for the project, that will address those impacts not only as they presented it, but if they're off in those numbers, that the mitigation that's possibly going to be implemented will also address those kind of what-if scenarios as well. So we've kind of tested that with the applicant. And then the most critical thing is this traffic or transportation monitoring element as well, and you heard the applicant talk a little bit about what that entails. But the key things on that is not only them testing or demonstrating that the assumptions they've made in the traffic study, that they've actually met the mark or hit the mark on those, that what they've said are the impacts are actually what the impacts are realized on the transportation infrastructure. But the other key to that is that what happens if they are off a little bit in those numbers and the, what we kind of characterize as being within kind of the reasonableness of testing of the traffic study is generally a 10% variation. So we generally, as traffic engineers, allow for a 10% variation, not only in the traffic volumes, but also in the distribution of the traffic. So if more traffic is on Varnum Avenue, is using Old Ferry Road, making specific tourniquet movements that differ from what they presented in the traffic study, we generally like to see if there's a 10% variation that's considered acceptable and design would account for that. But if they're off by more than 10%, I think what the key thing is always in the monitoring thing is to say, what is the applicant going to do if those numbers are not correct? And so we've outlined what those measures may be, and I think in this case, the applicant has agreed to undertake those measures, so that's a key thing. There's a comprehensive mitigation package, but also the applicant has stepped forward and said, if we're off by more than 10%, we're agreeing that we will implement specific improvements to address the fact that we're creating unintended impacts. So that's kind of a broad-reaching summary of the traffic study and kind of what our review has entailed. Now getting into a little bit more detail, and I'll first respond to the questions that were asked. So the first thing, you know, of course, in preparing the traffic study is we need to have good existing conditions, because if we don't have good existing conditions and as we look in the future, the numbers aren't going to be any good as we project out. In fact, they'll be further off from the conditions that probably will happen in the future. So the traffic counts, as the gentleman had mentioned, they were performed, actually, it's the week of Labor Day but after Labor Day. Schools are back in session, so generally, anyone that had taken some time off has done that prior to or during that Labor Day weekend, and then the counts were done towards the end of that day, week after Labor Day. So that's not uncommon that we would do traffic counts during that time period, and we don't find that, given the time period when they were actually taken, that it would have a meaningful impact in terms of being higher or lower than what they presented in the traffic study. But again, I understand that the commenter didn't have the opportunity to look at the latest submission. One of the things we had asked the applicant to do was go out and recount some intersections, specifically on a Saturday, because of the fact that we did see that there was some differentiation between volumes arriving at one intersection on Mammoth Road heading down to the West Meadow Road intersection and then traveling to Varnum. As we looked at the volumes, as they progressed from intersection to intersection, there was a large discrepancy, and so we'd asked them to go back out and do some traffic counts to find out what that, you know, what the reasoning was for that discrepancy. So they did go back and do that, and so I think as the gentleman has an opportunity to review that document, he may see kind of looking at some differentiation between the counts that were done in that week in September and some recent counts that they've done in the latter part of September of this year, and see that there isn't a lot of variation in terms of what the numbers would show in that area there. So the applicant has done that, so it's another data point to be able to look at, but we did find that the week that the traffic counts were done and the methodology that was used is appropriate, and that those traffic volumes that they presented in the traffic study are actually slightly above-average conditions in terms of what they need to look at. They're required to look at average, the conditions that they've looked at are slightly above average, and so we're fine with the methodology that was used there. In terms of inclusion of the future condition, our traffic from projects in the future conditions analysis, as you're probably aware, they are required to look at a seven-year planning horizon. Their existing conditions were the year 2017, so they're looking at the year 2024 and then conditions with and without the project. So the applicant did include the Lowell Collegiate Charter School and the additional grades that will be added there. The gentleman had brought up the Buddhist monks addition to adding the temple, the potential access there. The way that traffic studies are generally conducted is that if a project has been submitted to the board, if an application has been submitted, then they include the traffic from that project. So if it's an approved project, not yet constructed, or it's a project that is before a board's or formal application has been made, then they include traffic associated with those projects. If it's not something that's been submitted as a, in a formal basis, in a formal manner before the board, then it's not included in the traffic study, and when they go forward with their project, they do need to include this project because it's before the board in their analysis. So it's not to say that they should turn a blind eye kind of what's going on there, but in terms of looking at the traffic study itself, they aren't required to include that project because it's not formally before the board, but the, when they do come forward with the application for the temple on the site, they will need to consider this project. So the board, as well as the neighborhood, will get a view of looking at what happens with both projects in place. It's just that from this standpoint and given where this application is, it's not something that will be included in their application. The trip distribution pattern that was mentioned by the gentleman, when we looked at the way that the applicant had assumed in their traffic study, so how much traffic are they drawing and where is it coming from? We did point out that based on our review, that it seemed like the way that they went about estimating where traffic would come from, it was based on U.S. Census data and specifically looking at kind of concentrations of traffic in the city, but one of the things that happens when you do that is it's not as fine-grained to look at specific neighborhood areas. So as we looked at their trip distribution, it just appeared to us that there was too much traffic assuming coming over the bridge and using Pawtucket Boulevard, and there was less of a assignment of traffic more or less from the Pawtucketville neighborhood. So we had said to the applicant, go back, take a look at that, and again, this is kind of one of those areas where as we kind of poke and prod is to see what the impacts may be. If more traffic is coming from Varnum Road, is coming from the Pawtucketville neighborhood, and then is coming in from Varnum and Old Ferry and into the site, what does that mean in terms of impacts, but also how should the mitigation address what those impacts may be? So the applicant in the original traffic study had assumed about 30% of the traffic was coming to and from the east along Varnum, would turn left onto Old Ferry and then come into the project site in that direction. Another 30, 15%, I'm sorry, was coming to and from the west on Varnum. So the total was somewhere around 45% of the traffic was using Varnum and coming in via Old Ferry. So we had suggested maybe more of the traffic that's coming to the site should be oriented to and from the Pawtucketville neighborhood. So the applicant has assigned more traffic in that direction, and based on what we're looking at now for the distribution, it's probably going to be closer to a 50-50 split, where about 50% of the where about 50% of the traffic is coming from Varnum. 50% would be coming from Pawtucket Boulevard into the site. So that's kind of the new analysis that was been done. What that does is it obviously loads more traffic through the Varnum-Old Ferry Road intersection. And that's where, as we're talking about what potential improvements are at that location, it becomes a little bit more critical in terms of addressing the capacity constraints, but also addressing the fact that we know that we've got cut-through traffic, higher traffic volumes on Varnum. And the improvement that may happen at that location needs to be appropriate, not only to accommodate the backups that I know the neighbors experienced there, but also not making it so good that more traffic is induced to use Varnum. So it's kind of a balancing act there, and I'll talk about that in a minute. So the applicant has pushed more traffic in that direction, has performed an analysis to show what those impacts may be. One of the other questions had to do with why a functional design report was not asked for at the Varnum-West Meadow intersection. The reason for that is we looked at that intersection being more or less included in the traffic calming study that will be done in that area. And we do agree that that intersection should be included as a part of the traffic calming study. So we're hoping to take care of it in that manner versus adding more capacity to that intersection, which is what we're trying to do with the functional design reports that we've asked at those two intersections in particular. So hopefully, that at least responds to some of the initial comments. And now getting more in-depth in terms of the traffic review that we had undertaken on behalf of the city. So in terms of the technical aspects of the study, as I had mentioned, we'd asked the applicant to look at a couple of things. The first were those traffic volume imbalances that we had found on a Saturday time period. And these imbalances were occurring, happening for traffic that was coming down Mammoth, turning onto West Meadow, and then heading down to Varnum. So one of the things the applicant had found in doing a little bit more research in that area is that when they did their original traffic study, there were some road improvements taking place during that time period. And in fact, it was a road closure. So that resulted in some traffic volumes that never actually made it to some of these intersections. So the applicant had gone back and did some traffic counts at the end of September, revised their analyses. And so what you'll see in terms of the difference between the original traffic study and the new information that was submitted is basically during the Saturday's time period, volumes are higher, so delays are higher, and vehicle queuing at those critical intersections. Again, if you're looking at Mammoth Road, then heading down to West Meadow, and then back onto Varnum, what you'll see is that the delays that are experienced there on a weekday are pretty similar to what you have there on a Saturday. And what that says to us is that there is obviously a need for improvements at those locations, because we're having congested conditions happening on weekdays and weekends at those locations. And I think the neighbors will attest to the fact that those conditions occur. And again, they're occurring independent of this project, so there are existing conditions in the area that do need to be addressed. We asked the applicant to look at crash data. There is more recent crash data available through MassDOT through the year 2016. So the applicant did go ahead and obtain that additional crash information. And I think some of the things that the applicant had pointed out in their analysis is that, you know, in general, the intersections that they had looked at, looking at the additional year of crash data, didn't really show anything in terms of increases in traffic crashes or accidents or crashes at intersections. But there were two intersections in particular where they noted that the crashes did increase, I don't want to say dramatically, but there was a significant trend in terms of an increase in crashes. And those were Old Ferry at Varnum and Varnum at West Meadow. So just looking at that additional year's worth of crash data, it was shown that at those two locations, as you look at crashes per year, there was an increase that happened between 2015 and 2016 at those two locations. Again, really what that gets us back to is making sure that we've got appropriate measures to address the volume and the crashes that happen at those two locations. You heard the applicant's traffic engineer mention that they did include some additional traffic associated with an additional grade at the collegiate charter school. So they did add that in their no-build conditions. Looking at the trip projections for the project itself, the applicant has kind of validated, we'd asked some questions in terms of the methodology that was used in the original traffic study to estimate the traffic that the project is expected to generate. They did provide the information that we needed to validate the trip projections. And again, I think the key thing for us is that if their assumptions are off, they're going to point it out as a part of that monitoring program. And again, that's the key thing. If they're off with any of their estimates or their assignment of traffic to roadways, they're going to report that to us. And you heard they're going to do that at six months, 12 months, and 24 months. So we have a baseline condition that's presented in the traffic study, but then they're going to go out three more times, look at the volume of traffic that's generated by the project, look at how the traffic is using the roadways, reporting that to you. And then again, that 10% threshold is something that they've agreed to, that if they're off by 10% or more, they'll undertake specific corrective measures by means of additional mitigation to address what those impacts may be. So that gives us a little level of comfort. We've kind of taken them to task to prove out the numbers, but then they've agreed to this monitoring program as well that we've suggested. So we think that that's a very important part of the mitigation program for the project. We did ask the applicant to verify that lines of sight at the driveways are appropriate. That was one of the things that wasn't documented in the traffic study. They have done that. It's a critical piece, just to make sure. If they're demonstrating that the intersections of the driveways can function in terms of delays and vehicle queuing, we want to make sure they're safe as well. So they provided those measurements to us. And we do concur that there is adequate line of sight at the driveways themselves. So we've gotten through all the technical aspects relating to the traffic study itself. So then the key thing is really the mitigation for the project to address what the impacts are. Not only impacts on the project, but also existing conditions that exist in the area. So the applicant, I will say that they do have a very comprehensive mitigation program. So the original traffic study talked about specific improvements that they're undertaking at the Rourke Bridge intersection with Pawtucket Boulevard. They did conduct that road safety audit. They are committed to spending somewhere on the order of $45,000 to make some improvements at that intersection, which you think will be very beneficial to not only addressing safety, but also potentially, at least in the short term, squeezing a little bit more capacity out of that intersection. We all know that the real fix is the Rourke Bridge replacement project. So we kind of need to live with the conditions that exist there today and make them as best as we can. So the applicant has agreed to undertake some steps there and contribute some monies to improving that intersection, which we think is a good first step, at least at that location. Now, as we look at some of the other locations, the applicant, they did make some commitments to mitigation, but I think those commitments were more or less, they were undefined. They basically said, we're willing to work with the city. And I think, I think you heard that tonight as well. But I think from the standpoint of looking at the project and providing some more definitive recommendations for those locations, we developed some things that we'd asked the applicant to take a look at at specific locations and make some commitments. And you did hear that tonight. So looking at the Pawtucket Boulevard-Old Ferry Road intersection, there's kind of two pieces to that intersection. The applicant is committed to making some improvements to the Old Ferry Road approach to provide two travel lanes, so separate left and right turn lanes. That'll increase the capacity of the intersection, but I think it also, most importantly, reduces the queuing that happens on Old Ferry Road. So we had suggested that the applicant also undertake some safety improvements. The traffic signal equipment there is fairly dated, so we'd asked for them to update some of the signal equipment, which they've agreed to do at that location. The other piece of that, though, does also deal with the U-turn maneuvers. So what we've asked the applicant to do is you look at the site plan itself. Their driveway, their easternmost driveway on Pawtucket Boulevard, it's right turn exit only. They've done some geometric design to kind of prohibit people from trying to get into the U-turn area there, but it's very difficult to do something at that driveway to make it so that if you're in a passenger vehicle and I want to make a U-turn there to head back eastbound on Pawtucket Boulevard, I would be able to do that. The only way that you're going to physically be able to prohibit that maneuver from taking place is closing off the median. The applicant had said that they were willing to do that. We've suggested that that really does need to be done. It would be an unsafe condition for someone to try to cross two lanes of moving traffic that's posted 45 miles an hour. People are probably driving closer to 50. We've across two lanes and try to make a U-turn at that location. So we've suggested that needs to be physically closed off. Where that movement would be replicated is at the Pawtucket Boulevard-Old Ferry Road intersection. So that gets us to the improvements that are there. So the applicant will be undertaking the widening or restriping of Old Ferry Road to provide those two travel lanes. They'd upgrade the traffic signal at that location to replace some of the signal equipment that is in need of replacement. And then they would be making further modifications of the intersection so that someone who wanted to make the U-turn, they would be able to make the U-turn safely at the signalized intersection. So they'll be making kind of three sets of improvements at that intersection. Moving to the Old Ferry Road-Varnum Avenue intersection. So the applicant initially had proposed to provide two travel lanes on Old Ferry Road, again, approaching Varnum Avenue, with the goal of reducing vehicle queuing at that intersection. It would reduce delays to some extent, but it would not result in a condition where we'd have acceptable operating conditions. Beyond that, the applicant had suggested that they would be willing to work with the city to come up with an alternative improvement there that would address not only the issues that the neighborhood is having with cut-through traffic, but also would hopefully improve operating conditions at the intersection. Kind of the balancing act that you've heard at this location is we've got two things going on. We have an intersection that's operating well over its design capacity. That creates the queuing that's happening on the approach there. We also have a neighborhood that is experiencing significant cut-through traffic on that roadway. And kind of just to put that in context, so as the applicant has gone through and done their analysis, you looked at some of the traffic volumes that they've reported. So Pawtucket Boulevard accommodates somewhere around 21,000 vehicles per day. As we kind of progress our way from Pawtucket Boulevard to Old Ferry to Varnum, the numbers are kind of telling. So we have 21,000 on Pawtucket Boulevard. You've got just over 10,000 on Old Ferry Road. And then Varnum Avenue has somewhere close to about 11,000 vehicles. So as you kind of progress your way, if I look at Varnum, Old Ferry, down to Pawtucket Boulevard, you see how those numbers are slowly growing. And you can kind of see how the traffic is using the roadway and the neighborhood can kind of test this as well. So we've got a significant volume of traffic that comes down Mammoth, comes down onto West Meadow, ends up on Varnum, Old Ferry, and then onto Pawtucket Boulevard. And you can kind of trace the traffic doing those directions. And that's how you can kind of see how the volumes grow when they end up at 21,000 as you get down to Pawtucket Boulevard. So the balancing act here is we need to come up with an improvement at Varnum and Old Ferry, addresses the queuing, creates some additional capacity, but we don't want to create so much capacity that we end up with more traffic on Varnum. So that's the role of this functional design report that we've requested be done at that intersection and that the applicant is committed to do. So what the functional design report does is it provides to you, it not only looks at analysis conditions that the applicant has presented at the intersection, but it presents a series of alternatives for improvements. And the key thing with the functional design report is it addresses the pros and cons. So they'll come up with three to four alternatives for improvements, and it talks about the pros and cons or benefits and detriments that each of these can create. And one of the significant things is how will those improvements address the issue of cut-through traffic and speeding along Varnum Avenue? So I think the applicant had mentioned, or they presented to you some potential solutions there. They're probably things that we can all think of as well. So you could have always stop control of the intersection. You could install a traffic signal. There's a modern roundabout. And then there may be something short of that. Maybe there's something where it's a combination of looking at the widening that the applicant had suggested and adding some medians in there to control speed. It would also facilitate pedestrian crossings. But the idea of the functional design report is to flush all of that out, present some options. And then the city and the city's traffic engineer can look at all of those, understand what the costs of those are, and then select a preferred alternative. So the applicant has agreed to do all of that. They deliver the study. The study will identify these potential solutions, the pros and cons of each of those. It will identify the costs, and it'll also identify those right-of-way implications. And I think these are critical pieces to understand before an improvement strategy is selected there. I would suggest that, you know, the traffic signal is the easiest and probably one of the cheapest options to improve the capacity of that location. However, what that does is it does create capacity, induces that cut-through traffic that would happen, and has that also the potential of having higher travel speed. So I think we want to look at something that's short of that. The modern roundabout looks like something that's favorable. But again, we don't want to be predisposed to a solution at that location. And we agree the functional design report will flush it all out. So the applicant has agreed to kind of a two- or three-stage approach at that intersection. So the first stage is to provide that additional travel lane on Old Ferry. They'll conduct this functional design report, provide that to the city. Once a preferred improvement strategy has been selected, they will commit to funding the full cost of the design plans and any plans that are required for right-of-way acquisition, if that's necessary. And then beyond that, to contributing a sum of money to the city to be used for the construction of those improvements. So we think that's an appropriate step for addressing the impact of the project, but also existing conditions at that location, and would suggest that something along those lines be potentially looked at as a condition of the approval of this project if the board is so inclined. At the Mammoth Road-West Meadow Road-Old Meadow Road intersection, we had suggested a similar approach at that intersection. And then as we had met last week with the city to talk about the approach at that location, we understand the city has actually already undertaken that effort and that a potential design solution or solutions are currently under study at that location. So we heard the applicant suggests that they'd be committed to supporting whatever the ultimate improvement will be at that location. So I think we just need to flush out what that support may undertake, because it's undefined, at least at this point. But I think from the standpoint of requiring study, no further study is done. The city has a study of that location. And I think it's just a matter of working out what the ultimate solution may be for improvements there. The applicant is also committed to a pedestrian and bicycle improvement plan. The applicant is reconstructing sidewalks along the frontage of the property, which we think is excellent in terms of bicycle, I'm sorry, pedestrian accommodations. They've also committed to expanding bicycle accommodations in the area. We know that that's an important priority of the city. So the applicant has agreed to design and construct some bicycle improvements. Those would include potentially bike lanes along Pawtucket Boulevard or the addition of charros. Those would be extended along Old Ferry Road and then up to Varnum as well. Those would be extended along Old Ferry Road and then up to Varnum as well. So they've committed to design and construction of those improvements. I spoke already about the U-turn elimination. The applicant has agreed to do that. The traffic monitoring program, I think we've also spoken about in detail. But what that will entail is they will be doing traffic counts not only at their driveways, but they've also committed to expanding those traffic counts to include critical intersections. And those critical intersections would be the Pawtucket Boulevard, Old Ferry Road intersection, the Pawtucket Boulevard-Rook Bridge intersection, and then they've included the Varnum Avenue- Old Ferry Road intersection. So they'll be monitoring volumes at their driveways, but then also these key intersections. So not only will you get a picture to see how much impact the project is having measured at the driveways, but also how these additional volumes are impacting those intersections. And again, not to be lost in that is that really that 10% threshold? So the key thing is when they deliver the report, which you're going to see is a table that says, here's what we've estimated, here's what we've measured, and here's the variation. And so it'll be very clear to see if they're within 10% of what they've estimated. And then we've suggested what the applicant would do if, in fact, they're beyond those 10% variations. So that does include additional mitigation, such as traffic calming measures along Varnum Avenue and intersection roadways, re-timing of traffic signals. So the applicant has agreed to undertake those measures if they exceed that 10% variation. So the last thing in terms of the mitigation is that traffic calming plan that we've suggested, the limits of the traffic calming plan can be expanded. I don't think the applicant would have an objection to that. What they've said is that they will contribute $30,000 to the city to conduct this traffic calming study. And then any additional monies obviously could be used for the city to implement those traffic calming measures. The exact limits can be defined. As you heard, we had suggested that a minimum is Varnum Avenue between and including Jennifer Road, Bradford Avenue, Lexington Avenue, Tonsed Avenue, and Old Ferry Road, and certainly could be expanded to the east to the extent necessary as well. But the applicant is committed to doing that. That concludes our comments relative to the traffic study. We have comments on the site plan as well. The applicant has indicated that they have or will address all of those comments. None of them are significant. Probably the only critical thing that we've asked for is make sure that those pedestrian connections in the site link the two lots. And that's critical from the standpoint of just wanting to make sure that the parking supply that's available, it's going to be able to serve not only the proposed uses, but also the existing use on the, what's known as lot rowing, the restaurant use that's there as well. So they will be provided connectivity to ensure that there is linkage between both of those lots. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have now or later on.
We'll ask some questions later on. Thank you very much, sir.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it very much. So did the other gentleman have a question? Want to get up after Mr. Dirk? I think it was David, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. Just a couple of questions. First off, I'd like to better understand the access from Pawtucket Boulevard because my understanding is Pawtucket Boulevard South can pull into the parking lot. And coming out of the parking lot, you have to head south on Pawtucket Boulevard. So my thought is anybody coming south on Pawtucket to go into the site is going to have to go out Old Ferry to get back on Pawtucket North or go to Varnum and head north from the site. So the volume of traffic going into the site from Pawtucket South is going to have to exit onto Old Ferry to get back, to head back north, unless you're taking this funky cross two lanes, get into a U-turn, and take a U-turn on Pawtucket Boulevard that you're going to create. So I'd like to argue that a greater percentage of that volume is going to be on Old Ferry Road than ever on Pawtucket Boulevard because of the design. I would prefer to see a full interchange there where people can go left and right and pull out of the parking lot there instead of everybody dumping on the Old Ferry Road. Because if you have the option, you're either going to go left and go onto Pawtucket Boulevard where there's more lights, there's rowing, there's all kinds of traffic, or you're going to go right and you're going to go back up onto Varnum and take Varnum where there's no lights right past the hospital, which is the way everybody goes. And unfortunately, that drives right by my house. My second question is, and part of that, to follow up on that, is the plans I saw said there was three full-access driveways on Old Ferry and one, I would call limited-access driveway on Pawtucket because of the limited access from north and south. One of my questions is, of the proposed left-turn, right-turn, split lane at the intersections, just how many cars are going to be allowed to queue in those lanes until they actually form one single lane? Because the road is not two lanes in both directions. It's one lane in both directions. So if you split the end of the intersection with two turn angles, how many cars are actually going to fit side by side there? Because right now, during peak time, I have 12 to 15 cars backed up on Old Ferry Road trying to turn onto Varnum. And if you're going to have that much volume, anybody trying to take a left onto Varnum from Old Ferry is continually backed up because you have people coming down Varnum, turning onto Old Ferry, that's cutting them off. So people can't get out of that intersection already. So I don't know how we're going to handle that with 5,000 more cars on a Saturday. I see accidents all the time just sitting on my front porch. So I'd like to understand just how many cars are going to queue in there before they're backing up both lanes because how many cars are going to be in line? I already talked about the U-turn, the queuing issue. And then based on the volume numbers I saw, it was, I saw roughly 5,000 cars on a weekday extra trips and 10,000 cars on a Saturday extra trips. And even at a 50-50 split, you're looking at 5,000 extra cars on a Saturday coming from the Varnum area. And that's 5,000 more cars driving in front of my house, which is like 400 cars an hour on average if you're open for 14 hours. And that's on average, not peak time. So again, trying to get out of my driveway is already tough enough. Every morning, Monday through Thursday, that Old Ferry Road is completely backed up from Pawtucket all the way to Varnum, trying to get out of that driveway. So I can't imagine adding three to four, 5,000 more cars there is going to make it any easier. So unless we're going to do some major improvements at our intersection, I don't see that getting any better. That's what I'd like to say.
Thank you. Does the applicant want me to point his questions for the traffic mitigation?
Well, just to confirm, Pawtucket Boulevard goes east and west. So the whole idea of turning out of the project onto Pawtucket Boulevard westerly is a one direction out. There's also one entrance coming in from Pawtucket Boulevard as you're traveling west on Pawtucket Boulevard to travel in. That's for, really for safety reasons, I would imagine, and the traffic engineer can talk about that. There are three entrances. It looks like the last entrance into the project off Old Ferry Road, the furthest one up Old Ferry from Pawtucket Boulevard, would be your distribution for trucks and for deliveries, where you have the other two, one closest to where JJ Boomers, that's been moved up. That's a two-way intersection. That's an intersection you can come out, go either left or right. And also the one further up where the proposed market basket is. And looking at the site where you end up at Old Ferry Road and Varnum, if they're proposing to do the turn lanes, it looks to me as if it would be about five to six cars in each one of those turn lanes, whether you're going to turn left and go west on Varnum or if you're going to come to the intersection of Old Ferry and Varnum and take a right and go easterly on Varnum. So I think those have been addressed and hopefully they won't require. But I think the most important thing is what the traffic engineer spoke about is that this is an ongoing process where if this project goes through the development stages and we're looking at a six and a 12 and a 24-month outlay, there are going to be improvements made, if improvements are necessary. We've already had the commitment from our client that he's going to make improvements or work with the city for major improvements. We all know what the greatest improvement would be. It would be a roundabout. But again, we want to try to balance out what's needed. And if you get to that point where you're at that 10% or more, then we'll sit down and see where we need to be to make traffic easier for people in that area and to hopefully make this project work not only now, but in the future. And this is, this is an applicant that is committed to Lowell, has always been committed to Lowell, always committed to do the right thing. We're not talking about a big box store coming in here from a national chain. This is a local group of people that have been here for a long time that want to make it work, want to make the Pawtucketville residents a little easier if they want to go shopping, people from Tinsborough, people from Drakeett, people from even the other side of the bridge. I mean, we have another store that's going to remain open, which is probably 300 yards away over a bridge. Most people would not do that, and most businesses wouldn't think of doing that. But we're going to keep a store at Wood Street, improve it, and hopefully in the long term, with this bridge eventually coming through, we're going to have a tremendous site there that's going to work for everyone. So just to answer a few questions. And I'm not the expert, but if the traffic engineer wants to add anything to it, he may. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Curtis. I think there's a lot to be said about those commitments that are being outlaid. And I think one of the challenges with traffic engineering is that people see what they see out there today and in the future want to be assured that that situation's not going to be there in a situation like Varnum and Old Ferry where you do have queuing that exists out there today. And I think the leap that I think people take is that with the added traffic, it's just going to get worse. I think in this particular case here, you've heard that the applicant, you've heard from us, that we're willing to mitigate the actions of the development in and of itself so that what you see out there today isn't going to be there in the long term once these improvements are in place. And I think that's hard for people to understand. And I think that's why you have your peer reviewer to sort of take that effort and stress-test the numbers that we've presented to you along with your city staff. So we're confident, which is one of the reasons why we wanted to put that monitoring effort into this, is that we want to make sure that you're assured that what we say is going to happen out there is going to happen. On the flip side, I had to look at my client and say, yes, there's going to be a potential unknown cost to you if we're off by 10%. And that's something that he's stress-tested with me to make sure that we're comfortable, that he's comfortable of all this thing. And one of the things that I think is lost in this particular development with a supermarket project, we talk about new trips coming to this project site and all the impacts that could potentially happen, whether it's 5% or 10% in this direction or that direction. One of the things that's unique about a supermarket development is that everybody in the neighborhood, in the Pawtucketville neighborhood and perhaps people who are driving by the project site, are already going shopping somewhere today. You're not going to this site, obviously. You're going across the bridge to the market basket site on the other side or any number of other supermarkets that exist out there. This site here, just because of its mere presence, is not going to generate another, you know, as people have been saying, you know, 5,000 new trips. These are people who are already on the roadways, that are already shopping. Instead of driving across the bridge now, they're going to be stopping at this site because it's more convenient for them. So that's one of the reasons why we're so confident that the impacts and the assessment that we've put onto the table are, you know, we're confident in it. And that's why we're confident in dealing with our clients, saying that a 10% threshold's fine. I think we're 90% sure, almost 100% sure, that the numbers that we see out there are not going to materialize to the level that we've presented in our traffic study. This truly is, you know, a worst-case scenario scenario for us in that the impacts that we've evaluated out here are what they'll be. The high likelihood is, the extreme likelihood is, that they're going to be, yes, the driveway volumes are going to be comparable to what we've analyzed out here, but the actual impacts to traffic volumes in and around the area are going to be less than what you see. Because no longer do you need to drive down Old Ferry, take a left onto Pawtucket, go over the bridge to go shopping at the market basket. You can now just simply swing into the project site at Old Ferry. So I think that's something that we want to make sure is understood here by the public as well as the board and the folks who are listening in. Other than that, I think Attorney Curtis played the role of traffic engineer very well. And he addressed some of the other comments and questions that were raised. To the question about making sure that the queuing doesn't, you know, isn't worse, we will work with the city and perhaps your peer reviewer, if he's going to be reviewing our designs, to make sure that if we do put in a couple of lanes out there, left and right-turning lanes, that those will be appropriately designed and sized to make sure that they address the project impact specifically on that approach. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this point in time, we'll turn over to the board members for their comments or questions or concerns.
I have one question.
Yeah, Mr. Lockhart?
About the traffic monitoring program, I know you mentioned the frequency of how often that would occur, but could you go through that again just to, I think it's very important, obviously.
Yep, absolutely. So the proposal that we made, and certainly we're open for discussion with it, is that after about six months of operation at the site, we would go out and we'd perform our first monitoring. That's given the store an opportunity to mature. People have figured out their travel patterns to and from, whether or not they come during the peak hours or off-peak hours. So that would be the true impact of the project. And as time goes on, we'd look at it at six months, 12 months after store opening, and then ultimately 24 months after to sort of stress-test again the changes that have happened out there and look at what might have happened in and around the project site. The concern about the Buddhist temple coming in, we'd capture some of the traffic volumes associated with that to see how that actually worked. And I also suspect it would give us an opportunity to fully implement any and tweak as we go along after that first six months. Do we need to do a little bit of signal timing changes? Do we need to do a little bit of work here and there? How does that affect? We'd then take another look at it at the 12-month period and then ultimately the 24-month period. So we thought that those were good, you know, timeframe, six, 12, 24 months after the store opening, just to sort of capture what the project impacts are. Full build-out, yes.
Yeah, the data that you've collected and...
We would, yeah. We'd have a little traffic monitoring report that would show the traffic data when we collected it and the operations of each of the intersections that we talked about. There'd be a summary of how much traffic is coming to and from the project as well as what our projections originally were so that you can see that sort of, hey, we said there were going to be 600 peak hour trips in the morning and a Saturday midday, and in fact, there's only 400, 500, 600, whatever the number happens to be.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Dirk.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
First one should be relatively easy. Regarding the actual design of the building, we had had some discussion about that at the October, excuse me, the August hearing. And we, I had mentioned that I had looked at several of your sites. And in particular, Westford and Littleton on the side of the building, you know, had, you know, the awnings and such that I remember the discussion was that I felt that that kind of softened the view rather than, you know, the hard industrial look. Has that been considered, not considered? What, if anything, has happened with that design?
So I can tell you at this time that we did consider various things on the side. Excuse me. We, the owners of the building preferred this scheme with the flat horizontal canopy. I think anything can be considered. The reason we're here today with showing you this solution was that was the owner's choice.
I can't really tell. On the side of the building, where you just have that long expanse with the windows, what is on those windows? Is that that industrial slatted treatment?
Is it okay if I approach the easel?
Sure. Of course. You can use one of those microphones, just pick it up and push the green button.
The microphone's right there. Put the, hit the green button, or hit the buttons when the green goes on at the bottom. Very bottom, hit the green button, it should show up when you hit. There you go. Thank you. So on the side of the building is the produce department as well as some back-of-house. So in this area here, these are actual glazed windows because that allows natural light to get into the produce department. We're limited by the height of the ceiling and the racking. So at the below, there's racking, and above, there's the ceiling. And there's actually a lot of space in here, interstitial space for ductwork and so forth. So above that, we've sort of made it look like there's windows by using louvers. And then this is a light gray brick, which is similar to the pallet in the front. So this sort of detailing here that we did at the café, we brought that detailing around the corner. In this area, this is strictly back-of-house. There's no, there's no ability to have natural light here. So we utilize louvers and the light gray brick to kind of give that proportion when you're driving by, when you kind of glance at it, you know, it feels like a window. It feels like a tall historic window. But in fact, in this location, there are no, there is no glazing there. Does that answer your question?
Well, yes. But we, I remember the discussion, and we said even if it was a false window, the awnings like you have in Westford and you have in Littleton, you know, kind of softened it, you know, a bit.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, my opinion was that, you know, that louvered was a much harder industrial look. I'm not looking, I'm not looking so much for the true window being there, more the treatment on the outside is what I was concerned about.
Yeah. I guess we, in our view as the designers, we did address that by, you know, having a louver with a window behind it because an opaque window looks more false, having an opaque glazed window, kind of known as spandrel glass also. So having the louver covering that gives a better impression that there could be a window back there, but you actually can't observe it.
And that particular item is not, it's not a deal breaker. I expressed my opinion at the previous hearing that I thought it was just a softer, you know, less industrial type of look. But I mean, at this point, you know, that's not, you know, it's not a deal breaker. I'm just not a particular fan of that design. So we'll let that one go for the moment.
Thank you.
The biggest issue here, as we've talked about over and over, you know, in the previous hearing and tonight, is the traffic issue. And I think we all agree that the key point is Varnum and Old Ferry and the impact on the neighborhood and the Pawtucketville neighborhood as a whole. And as such, I think it's very important that we figure it out and we get it right because it's going to impact that neighborhood forever. I'd like to ask, the functional design report, how long will that take? Do you have some sort of a timetable on the, for the FDR?
You know, in a perfect world, it would probably take about four to six weeks to produce and prepare. We think that that's something that we could get to the city relatively quickly. There's a bunch of technical pieces that we want to make sure that we understand a little bit better and is presented to the city in a way that we're comfortable with it and the city can make an informed decision on which way to go with it. Some of that is obvious, traffic operations, pedestrian amenities. Some of that's a little less obvious, things like floodplain impacts and stuff like that. We want to make sure we understand what that means as well as right-of-way impacts. So we want to make sure we give the city the right information so that the decision can be made, you know... can be made, you know, in an informed manner. So that's, four to six weeks, I think, is a reasonable timeframe to get it to you?
Okay, yeah, because I think, you know, that's a critical decision here, and, you know, approving this project without some sort of definition of what that particular mitigation's going to be, I think, would not necessarily be responsible on our part as a board. So, I would, you know, be, I would be anxious to see that move forward and presented to this board, you know, as, as part of our final site, site plan approval. And in conjunction with that, you know, I would be interested in some approximation of cost, you know, and I understand, you know, that, you know, a roundabout may require takings, and obviously that would require going to the city council and so forth, but I think that it would be important to get some kind of a reasonable estimate of what those costs are, because, you know, I think that the city, you know, is not in a financial position to, you know, take, take on those costs, and, you know, nor do I think they should. So, I think, you know, I see, you've estimated, you know, say $200,000 in, in your number, that may well not be enough, depending on what solution is chosen. So, I would, I would be looking to see that, you know, you know, move forward and present it, you know, as a, as part of, before site plan approval.
Yeah, yeah. Jim Lamp with Janco, I'm a consultant for Demola's Market Basket. We build signals all the time, we've, we've actually built some roundabouts, and they can vary in cost, depending on how detailed you get, obviously. But, in, rough cost is how we came about what we proposed and what was given to the board tonight. We estimated the roundabout would cost about half a million dollars, and that's without takings. And as Jeffrey Dirck said, the easy solution here is a signal. We could go in and put a signal as a part of this, and it would more than mitigate this project, but we've been listening to the folks at Pawtucketville, and that is not what they want to have. So, what we're trying to do here is, is kind of thread the needle, as was stated earlier, and get the folks from Pawtucketville, or at least head everything in the right direction to get the ultimate solution that makes sense for their community, without having the burden of right-of-way takings and a cost that really, I don't think this project should bear on its own, which is the roundabout and the takings. The signal would be about, say a quarter of a million dollars, $300,000. This is how we came up with the $200,000, is, and we're estimating our, our cost of just adding the lane and median, it would help calm, calm traffic, roughly $100,000. So if you say a signal of 300, you take 100,000 from that, there's 200,000 that we haven't spent on a signal, which would more than mitigate our project. So we've offered that, along with design, land plans, and working with the community, which is easily $100,000 worth of work for this intersection. We, we think we've done a good job at trying to offer something that does thread the needle and more than mitigates the project. It would be very difficult, I, I've actually said it to the staff, a roundabout is a deal killer for this project, for us to carry a roundabout. We cannot do takings, we cannot, we cannot take land, a signal would not require takings, and would be a solution that would solve our problems, but it's not what the people of Pawtucketville want.
And, believe me, I'm not implying that, you know, you're not trying to do everything you can to mitigate this, but I feel strongly that, and a solution that's going to be agreeable to everyone, needs to be arrived at, you know, as a condition of the site plan, and, you know, maybe, maybe the neighborhood will have to bend some on this, you know, there's got to be some give and take, but, you know, I really feel that it's, it's, it's a critical element of the approval of this project. It's a good project, it will, it will be built, I have no doubt, it will be approved, I have no doubt, but I think that, you know, we need to dot the i's, cross the t's, and iron out some of these things, you know, for that approval.
Well, if I may, and, looking at the project as a whole, we're looking to move the project forward on an approval basis, so that we can start to do monitoring once the development has been completed, and that's why we're talking about a six, a 12, a 24-month development process, that if the numbers come in higher than what the traffic studies claim, then at that point, we have funds available that we can look to do some mitigation. I mean, we're always going to have a traffic issue at Old Ferry Road in Vannum Ave, unless you want to go to the extent of starting to do land takings and put a roundabout in there, people don't want a signal. Apparently that's what two individuals have indicated, that the Pawtucketville Residents' Association does not want a signal at Old Ferry Road. So, we're trying to do the best we can to mitigate what we know through traffic studies, through a lot of time and effort and money, to make this go forward, and that at that point, once the project's built, we may not need those implementations, because we may find that the traffic is not going to be as bad as anticipated. So when you have the two turn lanes on Vannum, you have the two turn lanes on Old Ferry, when you have the directions on Pawtucket Boulevard, and you have the U-turn that's been taken out, you have a lot of things that are going into this project right from the start, that will be positive impacts on the neighborhood. And if we get to a point where six months, or 12 months, or 24 months after that project is developed, we need to go and address certain things, we're there to do that. We're a local group, we're not people that are going to come in and, you know, put up a building and say, okay, that's it, we're doing nothing else. You're not going to get this type of compliance and agreement with, with other people that would be looking to develop. I don't know if the Cambodian monks came in here six months before we did, they'd have even a shot of doing what we are capable of, of doing. But to say you want to put this thing off for four to six weeks, so you can get some more information, we've provided the information, we think that information is valuable information backed up by an independent traffic engineer, so we'd like to move forward on it, and then we'll have that determination down the road, if need be, it may not even be needed. And we have come up right now with certain figures, 200,000, 300,000, I mean, it could be $400,000, but there are, there are funds available, and we've always worked in conjunction with the city, with the traffic department, with the planning board, to do the right thing, and make sure that we, we can have a very viable project that benefits the people of Pawtucketville, the people of Tinsborough, Drakeett, that border this area, and hopefully reduces the impact of, of, of traffic in the area. I mean, we really are doing a lot, so I, I would, I would hope to take that into consideration, that the board looks at this as a project that will have some ongoing development, and we're there to stand behind it, whether it's a year from now or two years from now.
Sorry, Jim Lamp again, just, just for clarification, the offer of us designing the plans and creating the land plans needed for a roundabout, that happens regardless. The offer of $200,000 happens regardless of any future traffic counts, that, that offer is on the table as a part of our mitigation. Hopefully that clarifies.
That's all I have for the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Teskey. Mr. Feshat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I really would like to clarify something here this evening for everybody here, and even staff, and this is going to sound a little bit about, like, me talking about myself here for a second, but I started becoming involved in, in planning issues in 1997 here in the city. It was a result of Lowell General Hospital requesting a rezone. And what happened is, we clearly, you could see that we were reactionary with big development here in the city. And came about a process to develop a city's first master plan. And I was on that committee, and arguably, probably the most active resident in the city of Lowell, that was a layperson that served on that committee. For my efforts, I served on a, on a panel at the, at Holy Cross at the citizen planning meetings, for communities that wanted to know how to put together a master plan, and also revamped the city zoning code, which we did. Part of the action plans of that master plan was to develop a Pawtucketville neighborhood plan, and part of that was because of the sensitive issues in Pawtucketville. You had East Pawtucketville, you had this stretch along Pawtucket Boulevard with the waterfront, you had some large institutions, UMass Lowell, Lowell General Hospital, and you had all of the, and you had all of the nursing homes there. And it had the largest tracts of land for development. And, so the whole idea was to put something in place so that we could be proactive, not to necessarily stop development, but to direct development, to set a template, to have a cookbook for people coming in, right? The worst thing a developer, is a shifting sand. Last month, you wanted this, this month, you don't want that, okay? So, it's not two people, and it's not the folks in Pawtucketville that want a roundabout. And I don't know how many times I have to quote this, and this is for staff too, who weren't here, God forbid, some people may not have even been born when some of this stuff was going on, but the point is, is that we wanted suburban solutions to traffic flow. This is a planning, we're the fourth largest municipality in the, in the state of Massachusetts in the Commonwealth. This is a large impact development. It's site plan review. Site plan review is not to deny a project, but it's to shape the project. 40B doesn't even address, Mass statute doesn't even address 40B, a, a, a site plan review. It is for the individual municipalities to design how they're going to address that. And in our site plan review, we, we clearly say that, this, this is in the city's website, if you look up site plan review. And I just want to make it clear, this is the planning documents of the city Lowell, this isn't two folks out in Pawtucketville, it's the planning docs, trying to direct development, direct development that comes into the city. And this is one of the largest impact, this isn't a rehab of an existing facility that already has an impact on the neighborhood, this is a brand-new facility that's going to be put in there. And we've acknowledged all the positive things, there's more positive things than negative things, okay? And we'll acknowledge that all day long, I know people can't wait to have their children apply for a job over there, okay? So, you know, I, I, I hope we can all understand, we don't need to be listing all of that, all, fully comprehend that. But even in the site plan review, it's a site plan review process provides a level of review for development proposals that ensures that it will meet development policies and regulations as defined in the citywide master plan, neighborhood plans. That's the whole point of this. It's the whole point of this. It's why I spent three years of my life on this document, two years of my life on the prior document, in 13 years sitting here, is to have something in place for when we have large-scale development coming in, so that we're not reactionary, so that the developer knows what the expectation is. So that's, that's the point. That's the point. What are we doing here as the fourth largest municipality in the city, in the, in the Commonwealth? So if I can just, can we get all on the same page on that? I can't stress that enough, all right? So, from that perspective, I, and I have some questions for, for, for Mr. Dirck on the, and, and again, I always appreciate your, your perspective on, on this, on the peer review, and it has been helpful for, for many years now. But my, my question on, on this, Mr. Dirck, is that one of the concerns I have, and I'm, I'm intimately familiar with the, the intersection there, and, so my, my concern is with what's being proposed as a, for lack of a better term, a temporary solution with lanes. And, and I do have a little bit of, you know, the, the third-party traffic study, I was also on the committee that the city put out an RFP, as a response to Lowell General and the issues along the Boulevard, and I, you may be familiar with David Friend in the industry, okay? So, he actually put in a proposal for the RFP, and I was part of the team that scored the different proposals that came in, and he was selected. And he actually came to the special events, he came, he was there on 4th of July, I, I actually rode around in a car with him, to fully understand what the impact was. And we put in some traffic mitigation measures on that section of the, of the Boulevard, understanding that it's a domino effect, okay? But one of the things that was very clear too, is when you start looking at depth perception from drivers and curves, it has an effect on people.
Yes.
And this intersection we're talking about is in a curve.
Right.
And I am very concerned with what the temporary suggestion is here, to address that, well, we, you know, wait for the, the, the FDR, and then what the proposed solution is going to be. Part of this is public safety.
Right.
And for the record, I certainly would have some concerns on the design. I'd just like to have your, your, your comments on that, and I, I think that needs to be looked at a little bit further myself, but...
Yeah, and I don't disagree with you, and the, the added thing, not only the curvature of the road, is we know there's a pedestrian crossing that exists there as well. I mean, one of the things, one of the things we had talked about with the applicant meeting was whether you actually go ahead and put those turn lanes in there at all, and, and what you heard alluded to was, you know, the, the possibility or discussion of adding raised medians in that area there, for, for, for a couple of things. The reason that that was brought up did have to do with the curvature that you're speaking of, because if we put the raised medians in, extend the back a sufficient distance, we are providing some sorting out of the traffic to get people on the right side of the road, so that they're not crossing over the center line. So it does that, but it also slows the traffic down, which is important as you're coming into the curve. The added benefit of the median as well is where we look at the pedestrian crossing, which I think is on the west side of the intersection, it gives a little bit of buffer room for that pedestrian that's crossing, and potentially allowing at least some storage area, so that if a car's coming, they can at least get to an area where they're protected by a curb. So we think there's some benefits of doing that, and that's really why the widening is something that addresses the queuing that happens at the intersection, to some extent. I mean, you're still going to have long queues, because you're not going to be able to storm all up there, but it doesn't solve those issues, which is the curvature, the speed, and the safety of the intersection, which may be better treated by another means. So, as we look at what the applicant is, the applicant is committed to implementing a short-term solution, whether it's providing those two lanes as the appropriate measure, that may not be, it may be something else, and it may be short of, we don't want the turn lanes, because we know that there's a longer-term fix that we can do, that will deal with all of those capacity issues, but the short-term fix needs to be safety, which is speed control, dealing with the curvature of the roadway, and those can be done in a better way.
And that's my biggest concern as I sit here, it really is.
Yep, and I agree with you.
And, and I have a lot of respect for you, and I didn't bring all my material on it, but in your industry, there is still some debate doing traffic counts in a holiday week period. If we could at least acknowledge that, I would be happy.
No, there definitely is, and, you know, I guess the thing is, is that if we're looking at, we talked about the fact that if you don't have good existing conditions to start from, when you go out in the future, they're not going to look, you know, it's only going to be as good as where you start from, essentially. To some extent, the applicant with applying the growth rates and things like that will account for some of that variation, because if they're off by a little bit, as they are kind of growing the numbers compounded annually, the reality is, it's not going to really grow that much, and so they're probably conservative on the high side doing it that way. So I, I don't disagree with you, I mean, typically, we would like to wipe out that week and then do them the week after.
Yeah, I just, I wanted that for the record.
Oh, absolutely.
Um, I've been doing this a long time, and I don't like to be told something that I know is just not right, so. And then, the, and I, I guess, on, on, so, let's see, on the responses, and, and, Mr. Dirck, you said you had a chance, so we haven't received your comments on the responses, and, and, but I know on... know on, so I guess which would be the best, on the response document, page five on the response document, under the trip generation summary, is on comment number four, I guess, do we know, because, you know, it's my business too, I deal with out-of-date census track data, census data. Do we know what year they were working off of here?
We're still working off the 2010 census data.
2010?
Correct.
Yeah, it's wild.
Yeah, no, that's the most recent. There's more up-to-date information in terms of travel mode data. The American Community Survey has some more up-to-date information, but we're still working with the 2010 census.
Do we think that would have been, I think, I mean, shouldn't there have been some adjustment to this figure?
Well, I think the key thing is really to look at what the, you know, it's two things. It's looking at the census data, but then also looking at the existing traffic volumes that they've counted in the area to try to see, you know, how those two correlate to each other. It does give you a good data point, but again, I think, I'm still of the impression that they're going to draw more from the Potteckville neighborhood than what they're estimating in this.
Yeah, that was my next question, is 5% even, it seemed like an arbitrary number to move over, so.
I think that the number will be, my opinion is that it's going to be much higher coming from that direction. But again, that's where the monitoring program is going to be key to that, because the 10% threshold's not only with respect to volume, it's with respect to distribution as well. And so, you know, that's where the variation, at least from the standpoint of looking at, the ultimate improvement at that location is not going to be affected by if it's 20% coming in that direction or 40% coming in that direction. The improvement's going to be the same. So I think the key thing is that whatever is proposed at that location has got to accommodate those potential variations in volumes.
Fair enough. Be with me just a moment here. And then it's for DPD, I guess. My understanding is you have, Mr. Durk had several comments regarding the site plan itself. I know in the response, there was an agreement on that, but we haven't received an updated site plan. Is that, is that correct?
No, not yet.
No, okay. And we haven't seen these elevations that were put up here on the board. Is that correct? Okay. Then, you know, and I agree technically from the Buddhist site, and, but as we sit here all trying to do the right thing, certainly it's, it potentially can have a large impact. And I understand the reasoning why, that's not technically used, but for anybody that's involved in the neighborhood and understanding the impacts, obviously, that's, it's from a, somebody sitting there, if they're watching this at home, scratching their head saying, why isn't that even used, so. Now, questions on the site plan itself? And I know we haven't seen finished site plans. A couple of questions that, I don't know if we actually discussed it at the last meeting, was the, do you, I know on the Bridge Street site, you had it set up so that customers could not take the cots off the site. And I know especially we're making, you know, some improvements for pedestrian access, and I'm just curious if this incorporates that, and if you could come to the microphone, please.
What you're referring to is a cart lock system, and I would assume because of the proximity of some of the neighborhoods that we would do that on this site also, because we end up spending a lot of time.
Retrieving carts.
Retrieving carts or a lot of money spending on new carts, so.
And there's a, if you've noticed on your site plan, there's a, you hear references to Clay Pitt Brook or Clay Pitt Sem, you'd be fishing a lot of carts out of Clay Pitt Brook, I suspect, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be something, if we made that a condition.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. And again, commend you with at least the landscaping that we saw, although my understanding is that now Conservation Commission has not rendered a decision, and they have continued the hearing. Is that correct? My understanding is they didn't receive the peer review until that afternoon?
Right, they received material, I think, the day of the meeting, and there were some soil tests and different amounts of information they wanted to digest before they could really make that determination.
Right, right.
More than, very technical information, but they are very technical, and we're going back there, I think, in a week from Wednesday.
Okay.
Yeah, two weeks.
Okay, all right. And again, to Mr. Sinensky's point on the windows, and again, we haven't seen those elevations, I'll be honest with you, my eyesight's not what it used to be, I'm not quite sure what, they're not onings, but what is it that you have extend offer? Because I know the look that we were trying to achieve, and I'm, I'm trying to visualize, the biggest concern was, from my perspective, I like the facade, but I guess the, it was to soften that, the side elevation. And again, just trying to get, wrap around what you're proposing for the window treatment, I guess.
Is that the one that's dated, July 20th? I'm sorry, is the date from that elevation July the 20th in the lower left-hand corner?
No, the date is today.
Oh, okay.
All right. Yeah, we have July 20th.
We have not seen it.
Yeah, we have not seen it, so, okay. And that's just, all right.
Is there anything?
Well, I mean, if you, I'm not prepared to make a decision here tonight till we get, you know, we have a chance to look at this and we get the finished site plan and this and the other. But I just want to give you the benefit of explaining this a little bit better to us as to what your reasoning is for that side elevation, so when we take a look at it.
So, in sort of historic architecture, building and a brick.
Could you use the microphone behind you, please, for, I'm sorry? So buildings of this sort of size and scale that have brick skins, oftentimes the windows have a certain proportion to them. Like, actually, literally, you can see here, they're typically very tall, sort of narrow. And unfortunately, we can't do that here because we have racking that's about eight feet high within the produce area, and we have a ceiling that's about 15 feet high. So we have a limited area we can have actual clear glass windows that let light in. So what we did to make it appear that they're historically proportioned windows, we made them taller and narrower by using louvers above the ceiling line, and then even this recessed light brick material above the ceiling line. And we have, and we have them recessed, so the peers are proud of the skin of the building here. So it gives that proportion that you would see in historic building architecture. So really, when everyone's driving by at speeds that are too fast, they're not going to notice.
Appreciate that comment, by the way.
That's off the record. So they're, they're not going to notice, is that a real window, is that a false window? So it gives the appearance of a real window. And so that's the, that's the approach to that detail. The canopy was added also from the last iteration to bring down the scale of the building. It's sort of a, you know, it's the height that it is because it's a grocery store, but we brought down, we brought this element in to relate to the front canopy, so we had a more human-scale element coming across.
I got you.
And we, okay.
Yeah, no, that's what I wanted, and I couldn't quite figure out what was going on on the site, so really, to kind of keep that architectural detail wrapping around the building, so.
So now it doesn't look like a side of a building as much, it looks more like the front of it.
Okay. Yeah, that's why I want to give you an opportunity to kind of clear that up a little bit.
That addresses the questions I was asking, and that was not made clear when I, to me, when I was asking them. You know, the fact that, of the canopy, I think, you know, accomplishes part of what I was looking for. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's all I have for now. Again, my thoughts would be, is, I'm not prepared to make a decision on this this evening. Would like to continue this, but also, we'd have to be concerned, I think, with constructive approval based on the timeline, but, thank you.
Thank you. We do have our traffic engineer here tonight. Ms. Vance, anything you want to comment on? I know a lot of things have been said about trafficking, and I know you've had a chance to look at the plans, and you've been involved with the city in going with the peer review as well as the applicant, so I'd like to give you an opportunity, if anything you'd add at this time.
I would, yes, so we did have a meeting with the applicant and with Mr. Durk and discussed the outcome of the peer review and their, the applicant's responses to them. I'm in general agreement with what they're proposing. I do, I would like to see the functional design report for Old Ferry and Varnum before a decision is made there. I agree with Mr. Durk that the applicant has made a pretty robust traffic mitigation plan to try and accommodate the impact that the project will have on the site. I haven't had a chance, I mean, I got the formal response on Friday, so I haven't had a chance to review it in complete detail in terms of all of the attachments. So I would appreciate a little more time before I could comment fully and provide a memo to that respect.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Patrick, anything from staff, further than what we've had in the past, or any further comments?
Excuse me.
No?
Not at this time, no.
Thank you. So I just only have a couple of comments. I think a lot of it has been discussed already. So I know one of the matters was for the monitoring trafficking study, which would be a six, 12, and 24-month period. And then the other question that came up was the functional design report for Old Ferry and Varnum. So I think the main concern so far has been, how do we address the traffic at Old Ferry and Varnum? If we put out the monitoring traffic report and we get the six, 12, and 24, how is that going to address to us whether the neighborhood still says we want a roundabout and the applicant still says, I'd rather just put a light in? We just get that study and say, yep, this is what we want, this is what we want, another 12 months, yep, this is what we want, this is what we want, another 24 months, this is what we want, this is what we want, and how is that going to be addressed?
Again, we're in a situation where we feel the best situation is a roundabout, but because a roundabout requires takings, requires situations that we don't have any control over, we can't really say that that would be the best alternative. At the present time, the best alternative is a traffic signal, but that's not in conjunction with a master plan or what they want to do in the neighborhood. They want to keep it rural, we'd love to keep it rural, so we thought the best compromise of that would be the turn lanes. And having the turn lanes at Old Ferry, both on Varnum and on Old Ferry. It's kind of a compromise, it's not the best solution, but again, in the future, it may come down that if the project was to get approved, in 24 months from now, we saw that there was this increase, and there was some push from the city to say, listen, let's fix this situation once and for all and put a roundabout in, then there's a process that goes through, and we're willing to contribute to that, and we're, you know, stepping up to do that. But, you know, again, we don't want to delay anything, it's kind of a happy medium, and, you know, I understand the process of the board is, again, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of its inhabitants and the convenience of its inhabitants, and we're trying to do that in a, kind of a very delicate manner, and I think we've done a good job at it, but if there's, needs a little bit more time to digest what's come through and see final site plans, then, you know, it may be in the best effort of everybody to put this off for two weeks, so that everybody else can take a little bit more look at it and come back, and maybe there's a little bit more thought process going into what is the best alternative at Old Ferry, Old Ferry and Varnum. You know, we're hoping that we don't have a 10% increase, we hope it's a 5% increase or not, no increase at all, but we can't say that, but we're willing to step up if the projects develop six, 12, and 24 months, and then come back to the city's traffic engineer and work on a solution. And we have, we're putting our money where our mouth is, we're willing to put the money up to work in conjunction with the city to do that. And that's there to improve the area, to improve what the inhabitants have to deal with, and hopefully, you're weighing the convenience and the opportunity of people to have jobs and whatnot in that area, and developing a piece of land that has just been sitting for 25 or 30 years, and putting it into a productive mode for the benefit of not just Potteckville, but the whole city, and for even surrounding towns, because I think that that's where you're going to get most of your praise, is they're going to see a brand-new supermarket that people are going to be enjoying driving into and coming out of, and hopefully, some of the improvements we're planning to make right off the bat with turn lanes and bicycle lanes and improvements to signals, and money that we're putting up to do that is going to improve the site right off the get-go. And then there's still Old Ferry Road and Varnum, but we will, we will work to resolve that at some point in the future.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I just?
Sure, absolutely, go ahead.
One of the things that, if, you know, using the time wisely too, as we discussed, I just don't feel that adding the extra lanes is the, you know, that's trying to address a queuing issue. I'm concerned with the safety issue, and that's no attempt at addressing that at all. And that's, that is a, because of the configuration of the road, that's, you know, a difficult intersection to just add turning lanes and feel that we've addressed it adequately, and I think that's a concern. And ultimately, number one job here is to make sure the safety is being addressed, so I would, I would suggest that can be looked at.
So I have no further comments. Any of the board have any follow-up questions? No? What's the question of the board, then?
Mr. Chairman, and I guess to the applicant, in two weeks, is that going to be, I mean, I'm assuming, has, Mr. Attorney Curtis, you've indicated you're going back to conservation.
We're going back to conservation a week from Wednesday, and hopefully, we're resolved there. So I would think that the following, when were we at conservation, last week? We're going next week. We're going next week to conservation, next Wednesday.
And then has?
The plan has been submitted, and we will be submitting plans so that planning and development will have.
Plans incorporating the suggestions from Mr. Durk, and we will receive elevations on the project as well. And you will be working with some of the city traffic engineer as to a better solution if in fact, and I'm not suggesting we're going to be happy with what we're looking at, but a better solution for Old Ferry and Varnum if in fact, if in fact, it's the collective wisdom of this board that we allow you to go forward without having any idea of what the end result is, and I do have some concern with that, because, again, we're trying to ensure, and for site plan review, using the master plans that are in place in the city as guidance. This is a large project with tremendous impact, a lot of favorable things going on here, but those are two facts that we just cannot ignore, and that this is the reason, these are the types of projects we put together the planning documents for. It's not for some builder that's trying to put a single house up and gets beat up going to the boards. It's about large projects that come in, large-scale projects, and one would think, as you've said, we've worked with the market basket in the past, and they've been cooperative with concerns, being a local company coming in here, understanding that. with, with concerns, being a local company coming in here, understanding that it's a, it's a sensitive area, they're dealing with a neighborhood, and wants to do the very best that they possibly can. And acknowledging, I think what's on the table right now, you've, you've really put a lot on the table for us, so I don't want to not acknowledge that at all, all right? So certainly understanding that. But as we all sit here, the, the area that really is problematic is, is the area that we, we don't want to leave unaddressed.
Right, but we have to keep sight of the fact that the best scenario for that area requires takings that we can't do and have to come from the-
Well, I, and I understand, and I understand, and, but we've done this in the past. If we have a determination where everybody's comfortable with what the solution is, the applicant says, "We're willing to work with the city,"
Oh.
Then the DPD petitions the city council, and then again, and it all moves forward. That's, that's the point.
We're already on, we're already on board.
We understand what you can control and cannot control.
I agree with that, and we're looking at a timetable now. You know, we're looking until late 2019 on a project like this if it was to be approved, say, at the next meeting.
Right.
But in, with, even with that, if there is a position where the city wanted to start to move forward with possibly, you know, going to a roundabout in that area, you know, that's why we're there. We're there to hopefully make that happen at some point, but, you know, we don't want to look out two years from now. We want this thing to move along with the development, but we're not opening doors to a new supermarket next week. This is going to be at least a year away.
Sure. No. So, but again, I just would, would like, yeah, I just would like all parties to sit down with that in mind.
I, I agree 100% with that.
Great, thank you.
In the meantime, we're doing the best we can with what we have in front of us for Old Ferry Road and Varnum.
I, I understand.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We'll have the 15th and November 6th.
Maybe too soon.
That's too soon. Yeah, right there, that's a week in here, so your next one will be November 6th. Fifth, I, you know, you have all your things?
Yeah, I have the, I have the 19 schedule. Yeah. This is the 19 schedule.
November 15th, which is, they're going to come from the 10th, so back eight or five days later.
We will get your sponsor around in a couple of days, this week 10.
Time to get it together.
Council, we're just looking at the dates and just, it seems that the next meeting is really, it's only five days after COMCOM as well, and whatever they would decide and any impacts that may be, we're really looking at the, the November, what'd you say, November?
The first meeting in November is November 5th.
November 5th.
Be the first Monday in a month.
November 5th? Because you have, there's no meeting on the 29th?
Nope, we meet the 1st and 3rd Monday in a month.
Oh, 1st and 3rd.
Yep.
Okay.
Be the 1st and the 15th, and then we'll be on the 5th, yep.
I'm just wondering if the functional design report will be ready at that point so that we could have that to review.
That really would be ideal.
Right.
That would be ideal.
The 5th?
Yeah, that would be ideal.
Yes.
It's fine.
Yeah, that would, that would put you in the best position.
I just, just a way-
No, I think that would, as you understand, I know all of us would work better with that.
Well, to your point, it just would make it clearer for everyone what the possible options are and what the impacts would be.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
Okay, so we're looking at November 5th.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue to the November 5th meeting, and in the, and the applicant is in agreement. I just want to make sure we don't have any issue with timelines here.
Okay, so we have a motion?
When was the application filed? We're okay on time-wise with regard to the application date that was filed. We're not coming up to any deadline on number of days. I don't think so.
No, we're-
It's not what we do, Mr. Curtis. We just have you sign a letter saying that you'd-
Yeah, we agree to extend it.
-consent a few days out, and usually, planning staff could forward that to if need be, if you're in agreement, okay?
That's fine.
All right, so we have a motion to continue to November 5th. We have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockhart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. The motion carries four in favor and none against. We continue to November 5th.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dirk. Appreciate all your help. Thank you, neighbors, for coming down and all your input.
There was a canopy around, wrapping around it.
Kind of shadowy.
Right.
The shadowy difference when you're looking at it, right?
Because if one thing doesn't work out-
That kind of does what you want.
Yeah. But if nobody, you're looking, it's shadowy.
You can't, couldn't really tell.
Thanks.
You know what? We-
If you guys can guarantee, I guess, guarantee that we-
It's too shadowy.
Right.
Yeah, that looks-
Unless you spend on that intersection, the more we can donate.
Can't you just do, just backfill the Masworth screen?
What's that?
Backfill the filing of the Masworth screen?
We could do that.
I mean, at least, I think if you came up with a plan, that if, oh, yeah, this is the plan, and then say, "We're going to do, you know, design, talk to you with this amount of money," and then we'll fill out the application via a Masworth screen, and we'll see.
These guys have been known to give Masworth screens.
That's our concern. You've already, you already talked about the jobs and everything else, so those are all the points, and how easy the solution is.
Yeah, there's so many different answers, and I guess the ultimate question, ultimately, I understand, is the city willing to take the risk? And where's, and where's, where's the deal from? I want to give it to that, if it's city council, if it's from some other source.
Yeah, you're not going to, you're kind of show the word, that's how we're going to backfill.
Right, right. I was hoping that near.
Sure, why don't we go out and bank that stuff they need?
They're going to go, what's that? I don't want that.
Okay, moving along on the agenda, we have the approval for the June 4th, 2018 minute.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a few just words here and there, but substantively, I think the minutes look good. There was an awful lot covered here, so I would make a motion to approve.
Motion's made. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Mr. Sinensky, you think second that? Okay. So we have a motion made by Mr. Fischett, second by Mr. Stensky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So those are approved. Thank you. Next matter on the agenda, we have the annual meeting election of officers. So we have the planning board, we elect officers from the 2018, 2019 board year. Positions to be elected will be include chairperson, vice-chairperson, second vice-chair, representative from NEPCOG, and historic board. So if I can go in order, we'll take a position for the chairperson.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint Thomas Linehan as the chair for the planning board for the coming year.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I accept, and thank you very much, everyone. Next matter will be for vice-chair. I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Fischett for vice-chair.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
For a second vice-chair.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that Richard Lockhart, he serves as the second vice-chair.
I'll second that. Motion made, and second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Representative from Northern Middlesex Council of Governments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint Jerry Fischett as a representative to NEPCOG.
Mr. Sinensky, you want to second that?
Yes.
Because I know you're just about to make the motion, so, all right. So that motion, motion made, and second, all in favor, say aye. Chair votes, yes.
Thank you. I'm the treasurer for the coming year, so I'm sure they'll appreciate that.
I do.
Now, I know in the historic board, we've appointed in the past, and then we get an annual, because I think their timetable expires differently than ours, right, Rich? Doesn't it come out like, like in April or something?
Yeah, honestly, I don't understand the whole thing, but it does.
I remember we did it, and then come April, we got a notice that your term's up, and we have to vote for you again, so.
Right, right, right.
So we'll make the vote now, then if it comes back in April, we'll make it again. So I'll appoint Mr. Lockhart.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Lockhart? Oh, you accept as well? Okay. So therefore, those are our representatives. Thank you very much, everyone. At this point in time, I do believe we had the opportunity to look over the 2019 meeting schedule. Any questions, comments on that? Basically the same as every year, to be concerned. So we'll adopt that. I don't think we need to vote. Patrick just said we'll adopt that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Any further comments from any board members?
Historic board meets on October 9th. I haven't had a chance to get an update from Steve Stow, our administrator, but I think it's kind of a busy night. We have two or three public hearings on important projects around town.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any update from planning staff on anything, Patrick, at this time, or?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. I think we're in good shape, then. Last matter will be a motion to adjourn. Made by Mr. Sinensky, second by Mr. Lockhart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have adjourned. Good night, and thank you, everyone.
Yeah.[1741.51]